Two three dash two nine two, committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, May twenty third, twenty twenty-three at six P. M. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
President.
Councilor Caviello.
President.
Council Collins.
President.
Council Knight. Council Knight's absent. Council Scarpelli. President. Council Sang. Council Sang's absent. President Morrell.
President, five present, two absent. There will be a meeting of the Medford City Council Committee of the Whole on Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at six P. M. in the Medford City Council Chambers on the second floor of Medford City Hall and via Zoom. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss council recommendations for the FY twenty-four budget paper two three dash two nine two. For further information, aides and accommodations, contact the city clerk at seven eight one three nine three two four two five. Sincerely yours, Nicole Morrell, council president. So just as the meeting notice states, this meeting is to discuss the council's priorities for the budget, so I'm happy to open it up to discussion from counselors, hopefully. All right, now, at least council saying, I believe other counselors should filter in, but if folks want to start, they want to share what, I know some stuff was submitted in advance, but if folks want to share what they'd like to see in this budget, we can get those requests off to the mayor. Anyone can start. Vice President Perez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for calling this meeting. As we know, there are a number of priorities that the city council has been pushing for in the budget. We were successful in having them appropriated last year, although some of them have not come to fruition, such as the assistant city solicitor position, and we also have yet to send out the RFP for the zoning, although that is happening soon. I think one other thing that's really become completely clear to me, and I think to my fellow counselors over the past year, is just the lack of clarity and a clear plan around what the city budget is and needs to be and should be, and what the steps are to get there. Part of this budget process, I'm really, what I'm really hoping to get answers on are, why are we spending so much money using one-time funds, which is a structural deficit, but also accruing such a significant surplus in free cash reserves? Those things seem to be really basically opposites of each other. We, you know, we functionally have a deficit and a surplus at the same time, and, you know, that's obviously what I just said is a contradiction in terms. It has to be one or the other. So I think personally, for me, the reason we don't have these answers is that there is not a budget director in the finance department whose sole focus is to work on the budget and work not just on the specific appropriations and making sure that all the journal entries are made in the accounting, but actually budget planning. What are we expecting this year? What are we expecting for the next several years? What are the main trends behind that? I know that some of the staff in that office work on pieces of that goal, but from subcommittee meetings and other meetings that we've had with the finance director, it's clear that there's not a single person dedicated to that purpose. And I do know that budget director was a title that did exist in the past, even if it may have been a title that was shared with another title by a single person. So my personal recommendations, which I shared with the council last Friday, would be to hire a budget director, a full-time budget director, so that we can actually come up with the plan that we need and have the data and understanding of our revenue and expenses, so that we can fund the services that we need to fund, make sure that we have a plan to compensate staff fairly, so we can actually hire them, and address the major infrastructure challenges that we have. And then my second, third, and fourth recommendations are, to me, should just be no brainers, but the second one is just to maintain the fifty thousand dollars in funding for our zoning project, for the phase two of our zoning project, and then for three and four, to fully fund the public, Medford Public Schools, based on the budget request by the school committee, as well as to fully fund the Medford Public Library, based on the recommendation of the library board of trustees. So those are the four things that I think, given the information that I have now, which is not what I want it to be, that I feel comfortable pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Perez, going to Council Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank Council Perez. I was, uh, I was talking that this is, these meetings lately are pre-arranged by this council to, to really beat up the mayor because it's an election year. That's what, that's what the dialogue that's being spun. I'm a little dejected for the fact that what we asked for last year and agreed on, we didn't get anything. I appreciate my fellow counselors to bring this meeting forward and ask, give us the opportunity to share what we, we need, but I'm very, I'm very confused in what we're doing here and the fact that we're going to give our wish and hopes, but we still haven't seen financial paperwork that we need to work a city forward. I, I will agree with Council Perez, in most communities, in most communities, that we have colleagues that are in city council and we, they call me because they don't, they don't think what we're saying here can be true. They, they think that, they think, like, George, is that a joke? Is that, are you guys serious? You don't, you don't get these basic, the basic information? And I said, no, and I want people to understand that what Council Perez is saying is true, what other communities have. I mean, I, geez, I, I think they've had a handful of meetings already in neighboring communities with the mayor, with the department heads, letting the council know what their wishes are, the mayor meeting with the council, giving them, giving their council an understanding what the financial climate is of the community, where the goals are for our community financially. I, I mean, we're looking at a day-to-day budget we don't see, and I see our major issues, major concerns, capital project issues, and has anyone seen a capital, a capital plan, any, any direction that the city has? Because cities have open and transparent guides. They have journals that you can go onto their site and they can show you exactly what their goal of the community is, what their, what their elected officials are working for, how they're working together. My dejection is that we don't even know what's, I don't even know what's in the bank account to pay the bill. I, it's, and I know what people are like, you're really stretching it, George. I'm not. You know, I've been hooting and hollering, I've been showing way too much emotion, I've been very intense. I'm going to tell you, it's, Madam President, it's, uh, this is dejecting in the fact that we asked the mayor, we sat here at one o'clock in the morning, they had to bring her back from her house, she came to us, she found millions of dollars, she looked at us and says, what do you want? Remember that night? And we told her, these are at least three things that we want. I will guarantee you, we will do that. Remember how she wanted to fund it? The funding, we were confused how she was going to fund it, we don't know. Here we are today, in a, in a, in a perfect, in a perfect community, in a perfect setting, in a perfect organization. The mayor will have people in place in every department. You would have DPW, you would have their own, because it's the biggest budget, their own finance director that's overseeing the biggest budget. The school department would have their own finance director, full-time, working with the city. They would have aides working with each department head right now, working with them to make sure they're hitting their goals. And it's so funny, when I, I, we talked, I saw the meeting post, I, I saw Council Perez sent out his, his wishlist to everybody, and I said to myself, I, I can't. I started writing it down, and I, I had fifty things. I had fifty different things, and what, what keeps glaring back at me is forget about all the bells and whistles that I really, that the city needs, that's expected, forget about that. Honestly, we just, we want streets that people aren't going to Home Depot to pick up car top to patch because there isn't enough DPW workers. We want to make sure that we have fire stations that are open and safe and clean. We want to make sure that our, 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 our workers in this community are happy to be here, that are working for a goal that all of us are pulling for. So I, you know, it's, I sat back and I said, geez, you know what? It'd be great to look at after-school care. I know Council Caviello brought up a point, and we were talking about after-school care because I've been talking about to different parents, and I said, that's a school issue. Sure, it, it could be a school issue, but in other communities, it's a shared issue. In other communities, they use their recreation department, they use partnerships with Boys and Girls Clubs and the YMCA's. They, they invest in, in, in Talkington, in meeting, and seeing the, working the best course of action for their community. The people keep asking me, what, what, what's going on in the school? They're saying that they're making huge cuts and they're laying people off. I don't, I, I said, that's a rumor, I don't know. Because this council president worked very hard to try to sit with representatives at the school committee side to see if we can talk, because that, I think, is probably the most intense piece of our budget. Because it handles, it deals with the most vulnerable people in our community, and that's our children. But again, if we don't have a true understanding of a school budget, I don't know, it sounds good, but as a former school committee member, I'm seeing things, I'm getting phone calls from teachers and administrators and telling me what's happening, the waste of money, keeps coming back to me, saying the school department used two consultants, one we know was fifty thousand, the second one was longer and a bigger one, but we didn't know the number, that we asked to have a meeting to talk about what these consultants have put forth, so we could put into the budget a safe plan for security at Medford High School, to see what the plans are. And no, nothing, nothing back, no conversation. So the people that I answer to ask me, George, how much does the school need if we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per se, ready, ready available at a draw, at a snap of a finger, to do a consultant, a consultant's job, that we have, we have superintendents, assistant superintendents, educators with master's degrees, doctor's degrees, that work with children every single day, but we used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So these are questions that when we go to approve a school budget, how can all of us legitimately look at a school budget and say, oh, this is what they need, why? The president, the chair, chairperson of that organization, didn't want to meet with us. You know, so this, this, I, I still remember when we first started, I remember when I was in the school committee, that, that the, the, the understanding of people on the council, people on the school committee, that agreed to disagree, but they, they did what's best for Medford. I don't see that today. We're going to have issues later on this afternoon in our regular meeting, that we have questions that we need legal representation. We don't even have an attorney here. We can't move the city forward in any way. You know, I would love to see Office of Community Development put together as, as what neighbor communities have, so we can bring in new money to our community. But we don't see that. So again, my wish, we haven't seen a money paper, the mayor hasn't come through with anything that we've asked for for last one, that she sat up there and promised. So this is what I want. I want new schools, new fire station, new roads, new sidewalks, I want new, uh, new fire trucks, I want, I want the refurbishing of, of, of different city facilities, I want the parks maintained, because I, I, I love this one, it's great and all that we're getting these federal funding for all these parks, because there was a press releases all over the place, Car Park, right, Car Park's being done, Harris Park is being done, and this is great with the federal funding. Have you looked at the other parks in our community? Have you talked to the people that play baseball and softball in our community? Have you talked to the people that play soccer in our community? Those fields that are there, that were bought years ago, that were supposed to be invested in? Nothing's been done. Medford High School Fields, I think it's year fifteen now. It's a ten-year turf, ten years. So it, yeah, I, we, we need a lot of things, but this is all, to me, it's, what, how, what I just, I know it's disingenuine, what I brought up, but again, I appreciate having this meeting just to talk again, but it's, 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 falls on deaf ears, and someone who was born and raised here and watched great people, new people move into this community, make it a better place, and watched Medford become one of the, what, what do we read today, this week? Medford is one of the fastest-growing communities, right? Isn't this great? What does it have to show for it right now? We're a mess. I get, I get ten phone calls a day now with not one issue, ten different issues, and you know what I have to say to them? I'm sorry, I can't help you. So again, apologize for my, um, my negative behavior, but in the sense that it's, I just feel so dejected, but I told you, what I said is what I think we need, but the truth of the matter is, we, we don't even know if we have ten dollars or a hundred million dollars in our coffers to make things happen. We don't know. And that's not for those people that are writing on their little, little pages. This is not an election banter, this isn't a ploy, this is, this is what's happening to us every single day, so, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Council Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell. I, I think it's always great to be able to have this sort of big picture, big perspective meeting before we get into the individual departmental budget hearings, which we'll be spending a lot of time on over the next six weeks. And I did kind of reading the, the spirit of the meeting, literally, I do have, you know, my very short quote-unquote wishlist, though of course, that's, you know, very far from, you know, being what these budget priorities actually are. But first, I just want to speak to, you know, sort of some of the broader themes that Councilor Scarpelli and Vice President Perez already brought up, because I think from the, from the tone of this conversation so far, I think compared to last year, what's very much on my mind and my colleague's mind is not our specific line item budget priorities so much as the overall atmosphere in which the budget is created, the atmosphere in which we discuss the budget, how much information we have about, or maybe perhaps a, the disproportionate emphasis on year-by-year budgets as opposed to an actual plan for how we're going to achieve our goals over time. Councilor Scarpelli mentioned that we are, we often feel in the dark about how much we have to spend on what, and how our priority, and how our priorities are going to actually be made manifest in the community. I, I think that we have a mismatch between data and quality information, you know, because some of this data is out there, you know, we saw a draft of a capital improvement plan, we got a presentation on that, we do occasionally get these big picture numbers, we've asked for AP warrant articles, we're starting to get them, but not all data is equally useful. We, I think if we, if we know where to look, we can find the information on how much is in certain accounts, how much is available, from what sources. But what we don't know, I think what we're really all looking to know, trying, desperate to know, is how exactly are we going to get from right here, the FY twenty-four budget, to any of our goals being accomplished? How are we going to go from point A to point B? How are we going to go from the departmental budget hearings that we're going to hear about the nitty-gritty of this year and these staffing levels, and this grant funding opportunity, and all of the line item detail level work, to how does that connect to the things that our residents ask us about, and the things that our residents see affecting their quality of life? I think for me, my biggest budget priority really is getting to a place where we can start connecting those dots, at least once a year during budget season, but get out of this environment in which we have no idea how much potential we're leaving on the table. We have no idea, you know, why things are not being funded more adequately than they are, we don't know where the, we don't know exactly why the numbers are coming to us the way that they are, and what other potential there is, and what kind of long-term strategy they're connected to. And to make that more concrete, I think that, you know, apart from a couple specific line item preferences, my biggest priority for this budget season is asking what exactly we're going to do with the free cash that is available to us this fiscal year. We haven't seen, I haven't seen any official numbers yet, so I don't know what we're going to be looking at, but we know last year, it was a fight to get level funding, let alone level service, for many of our very critical constituent services and departments, and given that, given how we're told, we have many, many, many millions of free cash that was certified last summer. If it is a fight, again, to get level ser, to get level funding, let alone level service for many of our departmentals, for many of our departments this year, we have to know why. I know, I want to know why there's money being left on the table. You know, and often, I think we use that term to describe development opportunities that we're not pursuing as fast as we could be, because we lack the staff to do so, but rather, the resources that we actually have in a context when so many constituent needs are going unmet, how could we possibly defend not marshaling those resources to connect directly to the constituent services that people already know that they're missing? Because we hear about it all the time. In terms of specific priorities that I hope to see from the administration in the coming weeks, we did manage to get that guarantee from the administration last year, that we, that we get fifty thousand dollars earmarked for legal consultant for zoning reconsification work, which I am really grateful to the administration for, we weren't able to act on that this past fiscal year, so I'd like to see that maintained, because we're almost ready to start acting upon it, that's probably my number one priority. And then my, the only other specifics that felt relevant for me to bring up in this meeting, given where we are in this austerity environment, and knowing how low the ceiling is in what we're likely to be able to fund, is being able to meet the requested budget number promulgated by the school committee, being able to maintain level service for the public library budget. Because of this austerity environment that we've been in for such a long time, you know, all of those things that I mentioned really should be non-negotiables, it's a little, it strikes me as a little surreal to have to mention those as budget priorities when those should be, when those should go without saying, but given the budget conversation that we had this time last year, and how we really did have to fight for level funding for, well, I mean, we had to advocate for level funding regardless of how it actually ended up for those extremely essential government services that, as Councilor Scarpelli mentioned, do target some of our most vulnerable members of our community. It's, it's hard to call that a wishlist, when these are things that should never have to fear going underfunded. So just to end, you know, again, the sort of the longitudinal note, I think what's, what's most frustrating to me is that we have these disparate data points, we have these disparate plans, what we don't have is any sort of overarching narrative for how individual data points, individual plans, individual staff people, individual annual budgets coalesce to any sort of forecasting for when we are going to achieve our goals, to what extent. And I think that's where the budget director role could come in, and other roles similar to that, you know, I wish we had, you know, a cohort, I think we could use a cohort of project managers dispersed across, you know, this whole city government. We have people working individually, doing incredible work with the resources that they have in various departments. I'm often, you know, just absolutely blown away by how effective our department heads, our city staff are able to be under really, very understaffed and austere conditions. But we're already so behind on so many of our stated, shared goals for the city. You know, we need to start laying that foundation with our financial planning, with our project managing, with our project planning that goes beyond one year at a time. If, if we just continue on this path of doing as much as we can with as much as we're given on a year-to-year basis, that's, that's how we've been going for the past several decades, and I think we can all look around and see how behind that leaves us feeling on our infrastructure, you know, on our staff development, and just on the quality of life that presidents feel that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Collins. Council Sang and Council Caviello.
Thank you, President Morrell. I think my fellow counselors have, have touched on the amount of information that we know as a council right now. I, I was stuck in traffic, so I didn't catch Council Perez's statements, but I, I assume he's also touched on that as well. When I think about a budget, I think of it as a statement of governance values and signaling. And so when I was thinking about how to create this list, some of the items that I put on there are clear needs that we have as a, as a city, that residents have been reaching out to us about, and some of them are loftier goals that, you know, if we wanted to do a hundred percent of that project, we most likely couldn't afford it, but it would be helpful to signal that we are making steps forward on those goals. And so when I think about how we spend this time in the next six weeks, I believe that this is a good time to bring it up to administration, to say, look, we would like something in the budget about this, even if we can't get something in the budget about this, we want to see a plan moving forward on these goals, so that in the future, for fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six, and future budgets, we know that something is going to be done on it. Even though we don't have the full picture, we know some facts, we know that our needs exceed the funding, most likely exceed the funding that we have now in revenue as a city, and that's not to talk about a wishlist, it's to talk about what department heads feel our needs for the city, what residents keep reaching us out, to us about what other cities are doing. And we know that that delta, that difference is quite, should be quite significant. I mean, it's not, it's not a matter of one or two money papers that come, come across us once a month throughout council meetings. It's, it's a big picture, we need to sit down during budget season and talk about overall, how are, how are we going to meet these needs? It's not about rejecting one paper. We have a wish, a wishlist on top of that, on, on top of those needs, and that wishlist, you know, I think Council Collins is right, we shouldn't call it a wishlist, it's really just an extended version of our needs. It's us, it's the equivalent of us going up to a department head and saying, look, if we had unlimited money, what do you need to thrive in your department? What do you need to succeed in city hall? And so it's not really a wishlist, it's, you know, it's just an extension of that list of needs. And we know that we have this conflict in the city between one-time and recurring needs of spending, and I think one example of that is what we might see in the future with Esther funding and in teaching positions, we'll need to talk about how, how are we taking, how are we approaching this twenty-five million dollars in free cash? How are we approaching the bigger, bigger question of revenue in the city? And how are, what, how are we sorting out what positions are going to go away, what positions we're going to keep? And if we want to keep positions that are slated, are scheduled to go away, how do we fund those positions? And I think that highlights, I think, a strategy that we should take on as, as a council this budget season, which is number one, pushing for a long-term vision. And even if we're focusing on the fiscal twenty-four budget this year, I think we need to take this month and ask about larger plans for bringing in new growth and new revenue for future fiscal years as well. Because I, I think Council Caviello says this all the time, you know, it takes a while for the shovel, shovel to get in the ground as well. And so I think it's important for us to talk about that. I think, I think Council Collins brought it up, and I would support this, maintaining funding for a zoning consulting team, I think, is very much top of the priority list in that regard. Strategically, we need to look at ways that we can bring in more money, and invest in smart development, and in city staff that would focus on expanding our commercial revenue base and revitalizing our businesses. I think in talking with OPDS, we have made a lot of strides as a city when it comes to these things, but the thing is, now we have staff that's, that we need to, vacancies that we need to fill in those offices, we need, they need more funding and support from the city budget in terms of reaching out to businesses, to teach them smarter business strategies, and to help them with blight and infrastructure. It is helpful for us to have outside feedback and consultant reports, and I'm not saying that we turn to consultants all the time, but oftentimes, on sensitive issues, those reports do help us have a better sense of how to target our spending, and so I did want to put that out there. Getting on to my Getting on to my shortlist, I think all of us here are fully supportive of the Medford Public Schools. I think we've heard a lot from parents of the Medford Public Schools. I did put out a survey to residents in the last week, which got around 125 responses. And about half of respondents mentioned that the biggest problem facing Medford is lack of funding for our schools. And going hand-in-hand with education is fully funding our library system as well, as well. A lot of residents unexpectedly, very unsurprisingly, pointed to the state of our roads, sidewalks and bike lanes as, as a major issue here in Medford as well. And so I, I think about a third of respondents mentioned those, or more than a third, actually. And so I would like to see something in this budget that commits to reducing that road and sidewalk repair backlog. And look, I mean, a wish list, but I think it's important to make that point in this council. This is a big issue that's been popping up a lot in our community that I think Councillor Carvillo has put forward some suggestions for that I've been working with school committee members and and other parents in the away from the council chambers is the need for more after-school programming. It's more, it's a more difficult problem than just throwing money at it. But we need some signaling from the administration that we're going to commit to either putting more money towards hiring more staff for existing program and, and increasing capacity there, or some planning for future facilities or future programs in the, as well. And the, these last two things are more wish list items that I don't think that, that I think are important to bring up while we have city staff before us. But I understand are more reaches. Putting, putting money towards a grant writer or a grant manager would, I think, would really help us capture more revenue or more, it's not revenue, but more funding for city programs. I, it's sad to say it, but much of our city departments depend on grants to survive. And we, it's not a sustainable long-term strategy, but in the short term, I think that's something that would net us more money than we spend. And I've been fielding a lot of calls about rodents in Medford. And so a lot of residents want us to put some more money towards a more robust rodent mitigation strategy. And they understand that we can't eliminate all rodents in our, in our city, but a little bit of looking at what other cities around us are doing. I think people look at other cities and wonder why Medford's not, not even trying. And so we need to signal that we are trying. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sang. Councillor Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. So here we are, it's, it's May 23rd, we're five weeks away from our budget date that we have to have, we have to pass the budget. Haven't seen anything, haven't talked to anybody, no idea what the budget was. But you want to think that, that frustrates me one of the most, I mean, so that we all have good ideas where we should have our money, but in the last two to three years, other cities have been flush with cash. We've gotten millions and millions of dollars of state and federal money that I, that you've seen other cities take advantage. Where did all our money go that we got from the federal government and from the state during, during these last three years? This money's gone now. This is the last year for the money. And I say the schools, the schools, you know, all these programs that we've been depending on these programs, these programs are all drying up now. They're, they're coming to an end. We'll, we'll probably squeak through this year's budget with, with virtually no growth. The big, the big problem is going to be this next year. Because we're not going to have all these, this state and federal money that, that, that was, that was thrown around the last couple of years. It's gone. The school's not going to have them. It's gone. You know, how long can the city live on grants? As, as as Councillor Sang, you know, their grants are great and they're nice to have, but that, you know, that, that's not how we operate. We need, you know, we have, we operate on with money. We're talking about our our zoning consultants? Well, it's, it's a year now it's gone. It's a year we haven't seen the zoning consultants. So the building boom is, is going to be passing us by. So, I mean, there's no rush with the zoning consultant now because everyone, all the building, everybody's built around us. And we're, even though we're the last bastion of, 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 of business to go, we have, we have no plan. And, you know, this council worked diligently for, for two years, they do the, the codification. We should have went right into the zoning almost immediately. So we, we would have been ahead of the game. By the time we go through the, the RFP process, it's going to be another 90 days. And by the time, yeah, you say, where, where are we now? We're going to be, we're going to be toward the, toward the end of the year. You know, that's just, it's utterly, utterly ridiculous, you know, and, and we talked about the capital plan. Well, we all, we all sat here and we listened to the capital plan, but Councillor Bares made, made, made the point. Why aren't we taking stock of, of our capital issues that we have before we, before we go looking at other things? Let's fix our, our capital things that, that need fixing now. We don't, okay, and, and those are gone. We're still waiting for legal. Gone. You know, I, I want what I asked for last year, and we haven't seen anything. You have a library here that was, that you own for about 60 cents on the, on the dollar, 50 cents on the dollar, and we're struggling to fund that? I mean, you know, you know, this is not a, you know, as Councillor Scarpelli said, you know, people think that we're sitting here beating up the mayor. It's not beating up the mayor. I mean, we're asking legitimate questions that should be asked. And I say, we're, we're going to squeak through this year's budget somehow with no growth and no anything happening, but next year is going to be the real test of this council and this budget. Where are we going to find the money that's, that's disappeared? And it's, and it's gone from the federal government and the, and all these, all these other plans. That's it's gone, never to, never to come back again. And I don't, and I, and I don't think we used our money wisely. And as I say, I think we've all seen all the surrounding cities all flush with cash, and here we are. We're, we're operating at a deficit, but meanwhile, we're sitting on $25 million. Tell us what we should think here. Again, I say, this is not, this is not a beat-up session. It's just asking, uh, you know, just questions that need to be asked.
Thank you, Councillor Carvillo. Any further discussion from the councillors? I mean, I would just know, I agree with pretty much everything that Spence said. I think those big, you know, I agree with Councillor Scarpelli where there is no shortage of what we need. We're not going to get a lot of those things, most of those things. But I will definitely beat the drum to make sure we continue to get that money for the zoning consultant so that we fund the library that we are committed to, that it can operate on the level that it needs to, that to also continue to be certified, correct? It needs to operate a certain way to consider to be certified by the state as well as respond to the, the budget requests of our school committee that they believe to fully fund our schools. I'm hopeful, I will go into this hopeful, that this year the mayor will hit our requests and entertain our requests. I think what was most disappointing last year was it wasn't a, I heard your request, here's why I can't meet them. It was almost as, as if we never made the request. So I look forward to at least a dialogue. I hope we can get much more than that. If there's no further discussion from the council, I can open up if there's any members of the public who wish to speak at this time, either on Zoom or in person. So either Will or anyone on Zoom. Going back to Vice President Bares.
I just want to say that, you know, it's a fun day when Councillor Scarpelli is going down the list of all the things we need, and I'm, I'm the one with the measured minor request. So yeah, yeah, it's like we swapped records or something. But I completely, I just, since I spoke first and then everyone else spoke, I completely agree with what everybody said. I think we all hit on different pieces of the issue from small to large, from just keeping what we already have to finding a plan to fix all of those big, big needs that, that you listed, Councillor Scarpelli, and everyone else touched on, but yeah, it, it's, what, what did you say, Councillor Carvillo? We'll, we'll skate on by?
We'll skate by this year.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll use up the last of the little bit of funds that we got left, but next year is going to be the real test of, of where we are.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Collins. And then we do have someone on Zoom who would like to speak.
Thank you, President Morrell. Just, just quickly, I think, and to Vice President Bares' point, it is, I know at least for myself, it's a stark contrast between the laundry list that I came in with a year ago and today. But just, you know, for the, for any residents out there who are listening to our discussion and kind of feeling the absence of some, if there's any specifics that we failed to mention, I think the Councillor Scarpelli covered a lot of the ones that I have in the back of my mind. You know, but for the residents thinking, well, why didn't you talk more about the need for after-school? Why didn't you talk about traffic calming measures? Why didn't you talk about bike lanes? Why didn't you talk about XYZ? Because there's a lot of XYZs. You know, the kind of, I was searching for a metaphor when I was preparing for this meeting today, and the, you know, the thing that came to mind for me was, you know, we have to build the boat before we can use the oars, you know, I think. Or, or whatever version of that, you know, fill in the Mad Lib yourself. But I think especially given our, given the conversation that we had last year, which I think is, you know, hung very heavy over this year and forecasting it to the next fiscal year when a lot of this grant funding just goes away. It is painful for me to be very aware of all the needs going unmet in the community and be aware of all the residents who are very aware of all the needs going unmet in the community and not be able to do more about that now. But it needs to start with the big picture. It needs to start with the planning. It needs to start with the capital planning. It needs to start with the project planning. It needs to start with getting more of our operating budget out of grants and into revenue that we can depend on and figuring out where that revenue comes from. And figuring out how to fund, you know, the gears that make the whole machine run so that we can eventually have that trickle down into the many, many slices of constituent services, particularly for underrepresented constituents that we're not currently able to fulfill, to our shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sang.
I'll be brief because I know someone's waiting, but, um, I think we made this point last year, and I've, I've really been drumming on about it. We have some great plans as a city. We have good teachers, good people working for us in the city. I've passed on the, a bunch of our studies and plans to experts in the climate field and different, different fields, and they think that the plans are better than the states and better than other cities. But, but the thing is, none of these plans will be implemented unless we have that conversation about how we're going to fund those plans. And so I, I, I think we've all talked about how much of a black box it can feel working on the budget and how difficult it is to put forward recommendations without knowing the full picture. And I, I think there's, there's tons of small ideas I would love our city to do, I, but without an idea of what we, what our staff capacity is, it's hard to put that on the list today and hard to talk about it without, have it without directly asking administration about it. Even though we face all those challenges, I think we, it's important to highlight the, the need to push for those big picture ideas as well.
Thank you, Councillor Sang. Yeah, I would agree that we have many, many wonderful city employees and school employees that know how to do more with less, and wouldn't it be nice if it didn't have to be that way? So we'll get, you know, hopefully we get that, what, that, that boat first before we get the, hopefully we'll get that boat. Going to Jennifer Sullivan on Zoom. I will unmute you. No, someone already did. Great. Name an address for the record, please. Oh, wait, just kidding. There you go.
Hi, Jen Sullivan, Marston Street. I was, I wanted to know, is there anything that we as sort of involved residents can do to, you know, I, I, like, I, I want, I, there's a lot of us that are, that are invested in what happens here, and we don't want to watch another circus from, and that's from everyone, and, you know, and what can we do to sort of support better transparency and communication and not meet it with anger and, you know, try, try to really get some progress. We've got to, like, like you just, like someone just said, there's, we're a city full of talented, bright, motivated people that have great ideas, and it just seems, you know, like we're, like no one's talking. So I'm open to any advice on how we as residents can support some progress.
I mean, I would, at, at this point, the budget is with the mayor. The mayor and her administration write the budget. Unfortunately, you know, it's like a 90% baked cake by the time it gets to us, and we can only do so much. So I think at this point, it's reaching out to the administration. When it gets to the council, we will absolutely do our best, but it's the mayor. The bulk of the work is, is with her and her administration.
Thank you. Thank you for the residents speaking. I think that, I, I, I think first, I think that I appreciate that we have residents like our present company that's reaching out and saying, how can we help? And that's what's impressive about Medford. That's what makes Medford great. I think that's what is keeping Medford above ground right now. I mean, in, in, not going underwater completely, but I know it, it's not anger, because it isn't. It's really frustration. And the frustration is, if you, if you look at neighboring communities, I'll give you an example. Next week, our neighboring community on Wednesday is the mayor is already meeting with their city council, and they've already, the city council in a neighboring community has already been given total autonomy, what the budget looks like and where, where money is going on a day-to-day basis. So at least they have an understanding where it's going. You have the school committee on that same, the same side has already been talking with the mayor and the council about what Councillor Sang was talking about, is sustainability for what was spent with ESSER money and COVID money. And seeing what are, what are programs that could be sustained in their budget, and them looking at a long-term plan to make sure those very important pieces that have shown through data that it's needed in the community and how they can fund it. I think what you're seeing here is the frustration that we, we don't even see, we don't see that tunnel, let alone the light in the tunnel. So we, we, we're going to be, you know, and it was a circus, you know, the last, last budget season was a circus. But I think it became a circus because this council would not accept to walk away without the basic needs that we need to be successful. And again, I appreciate the member of the community. I think that council president mentioned, answered that perfectly. I think it's asking the administration, you know, where is the process? Why, why hasn't there been transparency that, and I think that's what the mayor has run on. You know, she ran on that a few years back, is transparency. And I, I, you know, I was so excited because I sat next to her and we talked about the issues and, you know, how appalled she was that we would get the budget weeks, two weeks before, and we, we didn't even see a budget last year. And right now, we don't even sniff, we don't even see a financial to show us what our financial climate is. So it's frustrating and it makes me very nervous that the fact that, you know, we have kids in the public schools and we don't know what, what, what to tell them. We, I have parents that are asking me, you know, there are rumors out there about cuts and, and layoffs, and if that's the case, should they be looking to maybe go to a private school or move to a parochial school? And to me, that, that's the problem with this community, this administration, that you're, you're leaving things so open-ended that you're driving people to make decisions that they truly can't afford. And again, I, I appreciate you looking out and appreciate the involvement and, but let's reach out to the mayor. I mean, again, this is furthest from a political ploy. This is something that we've been talking about for years. This isn't something new. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the Vice President Bares?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just add too, to that point, definitely agree with President Morrell, Councillor Scarpelli. You know, when we receive a budget, I'm hoping to be able to take a look at the bottom lines and try to present the information in a more, maybe, you know, I hope it's presented in maybe a more comprehensive way in the budget. I don't know yet. Certainly last year when we were putting together sheets and sheets of paper and didn't have anything, that was, that, you know, we talk about a circus, that was the circus. We never got a complete budget in the first place, and that's why we were asking questions that in a normal year, we would have had the information in advance and wouldn't have had to ask, and likely, I think, would have had more time to not have things go to the last minute on the last day. Now, who knows? You know, that's Monday morning quarterbacking, but I, I would really say, yes, definitely at this point, it's in the hands of the mayor. When it's released publicly, that's when, you know, it'll be released publicly, that's when we get it, the mayor's proposal. And I'm going to take a look at it, and I'm hoping the information will be there that I'll be able to say, okay, now I understand why we had a free cash surplus last year, and here's what's being proposed, and here's how much one-time funding is being used. And then, then if that is not made clear from the presentation, And then, if that is not made clear from the presentation in that proposal, I'll try to bring something to a future council meeting myself, you know, basically just share with the public what I, the work that I tried to do to understand the document. So at that point, I think we'll have a much clearer understanding of how much one-time funding are we using, some shape of what the fiscal cliff we're looking at is in the next budget, if it's not already in this budget, things that aren't funded, and potentially even, again, like we had last year, what's the amount of money that's not here that we need now to fund essential services, and is there a real revenue proposal to get that money? So that's something that I'm hoping to do. I don't have enough data to do that yet, which is one reason it's very difficult to answer your question at this time about what can we do? I don't know how bad it is yet, or how good it is.
Thank you. And I will, go ahead.
Madam President, one last question, and I won't belabor the point, so as Councilor Bares brought up, who's going to present the budget this year? Who's going to answer the budget questions? We don't have a budget director.
I do not know, I can ask the administration. I was going to say, do you have anything else you want to add, because I was just kind of, I did, in Steve with the Chief of Staff, I believe it was Thursday, they're still hopeful that they will get us the budget this Friday. If we do get the budget this Friday, I will gleefully schedule budget meetings starting next Tuesday.
Whatever you say.
So, but I will absolutely make sure we, I will ask who is going to be presenting, and I will make sure, you know, A, we're not meeting until we get a budget book, and B, that we have the time to actually sit with it and digest it and, you know, come prepared and make the best use of everyone's time, the public, ours, department heads, everyone. So any further discussion? Vice President Bares?
I would just move to submit any written documents on recommendations provided by councilors, as well as the committee report to the mayor for consideration.
Do you have it, Mr. Clerk? Would you like to add adjourning?
And adjourn.
Great.
Adjourning's good.
I would expect a big drop to something different.
Vice President Bares, we've submitted any documents provided by councilors and those committee reports to the mayor.
Vice President Bares, second right, Councilor Carvillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes and meeting adjourned.